So next, I was surprised. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. It's nine o'clock. We're here in the center hearing room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Chair, before we get started today, I would like to make a motion to add an item to the action agenda. Under Public Works, consider approval of a construction contract with North Saniam Paving Company to provide construction services to the North Fork Road Slide Repair at Mile Close 13.0 Project.
I will second the motion. We have a motion a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes and the item is added. I don't have anybody signed up for public comments. We're going to go right into our first presentation, and I'm going to welcome Alvin, our own policy analyst up, Alvin Clausen, and we're going to discuss the wall that heals traveling replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Alvin Clausen. I'm the Government Relations Manager for Marion County. I have the distinct honor to open up a presentation on the Wall of Heals with Billy Winston, a Vietnam combat veteran, and Brent DeMoe, the Director of Polk County Family and Community Outreach. I just wanted to tell two stories before I open it up. Well, we're going to play a video and then we'll let our guest speak. One of the stories was I was down at the World War II Memorial about two years ago, and I noticed that somebody had the same last name as me, and I spell my name a little bit different. Clausen is usually with a C or two S's, and so I told my aunt about the person on the wall with our name, and she's like, of course, that's your great-grandfather, which, you know, a couple people failed to mention in my lifetime. But the profound connection that just having that on the wall and the through line between his service and my service was so meaningful to me, and now, just being a couple blocks away, I still have that connection. Let's go a little bit further back. About 10 years ago, my uncle, who was a Vietnam veteran, he was artillery and his unit got overran. He lost a ton of the guys he served with. He came back and, you know, he had a little bit of frustration and went through years of PTSD. He decided, he was convinced by a group of his motorcycle veteran buddies, to drive across the country and go see the wall in Washington, DC, the same wall this is a replica of. And so he's going through the names, and they do it by casualty. So his, a huge chunk of his unit was name after name after name. And he said, as he was going through those names, he hadn't thought about a lot of those guys for 40, 45 years, but he started to remember their faces. He started to remember conversations that he had with them. And I bring those two stories up, just the power of these memorials and what they do, not just for the community, but for the families and the veterans themselves. So I just wanted to open that up with how important these things are, and then we're going to play a little video and hope that I don't mess this up. All right. Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to pass this off to Brent to kick this off and talk a little bit about this amazing memorial that's going around the country.
Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. AJ, thank you for that great introduction, and thank you for letting Billy and I come and just spend a few minutes to tell you about this pretty unique project. Billy and I are going to kind of take turns for the next few minutes talking about the highlights that I think are relevant for the commissioners, the commissioners-to-know, and also the citizens of Marion County. But that video really did a great job of introducing what's going to happen. Billy, you want to take it from here and talk about your perspective, and I'll fill in the gaps.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to speak about the Wall of Heals. The Wall of Heals is a three-quarter scale replica and the only three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Memorial in Washington. It's maintained by the same folks that maintain the memorial in Washington, and they're unique in that regard, that they're the only people that are associated with the memorial in Washington. It's three-quarter scale. Each wing is 175 feet long. It's 85 feet at the apex, and there's a 328 span of distance between the two wings. There's also the Mobile Education Center, which you saw in that video, that will transport the panels, will be starting from the Oregon National Guard parking lot and proceeding down 17th, and then we'll be coming right down Court Street, over the bridge, through Dallas, through the WOU campus in Monmouth, through Monmouth, through Independence, and then ultimately setting it up on the, will be arriving on the 16th of September. The wall will begin being erected on the 17th of the morning. It requires a tremendous amount of folks to maintain this for 24 hours a day. So once the wall is up and erected, it's also illuminated 24 hours a day. They require 193 volunteers plus setup crew and a takedown crew. And through the tremendous support that we've received, we already have the setup and the takedown crew. The setup crew is going to be done by Les Schwab and their area managers, and the takedown crew is going to be done by the Western Oregon University baseball team. They've made that a team project, so they'll be taking it down for us. The Mobile Education Center will convert with two or three six-foot screens. One of them will show the hometown heroes, it's called, of the servicemen who passed from Polk County. The other screen, there's a program that the Vietnam Veterans Memorial has called In Memory. That program is to honor and remember those Vietnam veterans, like myself, who survived but were affected by toxins that have since passed, and those will also be displayed. So I'm looking forward to that. There's memorabilia from the Vietnam War. There's a history of the war. There are guided tours offered for students, and that's what we're really hopeful of, is getting quite a few students to come and get some education on the Vietnam War. Also, to Vietnam veterans, to senior citizen homes, we're trying to get as many people as we can to come visit. My experience with this as a Vietnam veteran, combat Vietnam veteran, is it gives Vietnam veterans an opportunity to speak to other Vietnam veterans that they might not be able to speak to, folks that didn't experience what they experienced. And that in itself is healing. One other thing I would say to what you had mentioned about the effects of a name, I was able to help design a coin, commemorative coin, for this event, and I was with a young man named Martin Milik on the day he died in Vietnam. He had asked me to take his place on a mission. We took turns as radio operators going out when something extra came up, as if what we were doing wasn't enough. There was always something extra. So Martin and I had been up playing poker, and he felt bad. He looked bad, and he knew that it was his turn because I'd been out before, and it was a close one for me. So I said, no, Marty, it's your turn. Marty, I called him on the radio. I said, keep your head down, son. He said, I'll be okay. They flew right into an ambush. Marty lost his life that day. So in the design of this commemorative coin, that we have numbered coins, I was able to incorporate Martin's name. I took a screenshot of the panel that he's listed on, on this very powerful memorial, and his name is dead center on the face of this coin. And subsequently, I was able to find Martin's family in Philadelphia. He had three brothers and four sisters, and in speaking with them and with their permission, I'm going to fly out next Friday to Philadelphia and present them with the first seven coins that we have for this visit for the Wall of Heals. I'm looking forward to that, to meeting the family and to remind them that Martin was never forgotten by me, and he never will be, and of course, the family never will. But for the healing part of this is why I tell this story. It has that opportunity and the possibility for other Vietnam veterans and for other family members and community members that were affected by the Vietnam War to have that, the possibility of that experience of healing, and that's why we're trying to let as many people as we know that it's coming here. There were 140 applicants to host the wall for this year. We were one of 30, and we're the only stop in Oregon, and it's going to be here on the 16th. It'll run through the 21st, and we'll have an Agent Orange ceremony on the 19th, and the wall will be illuminated in orange. So that's all I can remember and think of at this time.
I'll fill in just a couple of blanks.
Thanks.
So just to reiterate, there are flyers over there. The website and the QR code on here has so much information on it. The city of Independence built us an amazing website. If you just Google "The Wall That Heals: Independence, Oregon," you're going to find everything you need to know, how to volunteer, the exact route, give me a bunch of money and donate there. There's lots of ways to get involved. The biggest need that we have is for volunteers. Billy mentioned it's close to 200 volunteers that we need to make this happen, and some of the volunteer opportunities are also 24/7. So if anybody is interested, whether it's groups of high school kids that are well-supervised or adults, we probably have a volunteer opportunity for just about everybody. The wall will be coming open to the public September 18th through the 21st, and it'll be at the Independence Sports Park, which is just north of the town of Independence. It's where the new boat ramp and the soccer fields and all that place is. So as you saw in the video, it's giant. It's nearly 400 feet, and it takes a big space. So it will be open to the public for a solid three and a half days. Commissioners, do either one of you have a motorcycle?
No.
It would be greatly appreciated if you could purchase one by September 16th, because one of the really cool things that Billy sort of alluded to is, we're going to meet at the National Guard Armory on the 16th, and that semi-truck is going to be parked there, and we are going to have hundreds of motorcycles, police escort, and other emergency vehicles bring that wall through downtown Salem, right across the bridge, and like Billy said, through Dallas, Monmouth, and then finally in Independence. So the plan, if it gets approved, is it's going to come right past the courthouse. In really awesome cities across the United States, and I know we want to be right up there and rank with them, people are out on the street, people who have American flags, people are out there supporting when it goes by that slow procession, and that's really what we're hoping for to see in downtown Salem on the 16th. And when we get firmed up on exactly when it's going to come by here, we'll be sure and communicate with you all and let you know when that is. The final thing that we have to say, and then we're happy to take any questions you have, is although I do work for Polk County and the Polk County Board of Commissioners and my department have been involved in some way, it was Billy years ago and other citizens that wanted to do this. And I think that's the perfect way to partner with government on this, is this was a citizen-led effort, the majority of the committee is citizens, and the majority of the work that has been done has been done by citizens, and many of them also combat veterans from the Vietnam War, just like Billy. And just to throw a little personal party in here, I've known Billy for about seven years now, and my father was also a Vietnam veteran and a guy who never once talked about it. In all the years that he was alive, he has since passed away. Didn't know anything about his time there. I have four brothers, I had a mom, we just didn't know, he didn't talk about it. After he passed away, because I run the Veteran Service Department for the county, I figured somebody told me I could send away and kind of find out some things, and just a weird coincidence that it turns out that Billy and my father were in the same Marine Corps unit. I mean, what are the odds of that? My dad's from Toledo, Oregon, and Billy, where did you hail from?
Dakotus, Texas.
Wherever that is, somewhere in Texas.
I know where it's at.
You do. Just an interesting connection that we all have. If you trace it back far enough, there's always going to be a connection to know somebody who served in the Vietnam War or what that did. And through my relationship with Billy and why I got so passionate about bringing the wall here is, if we would have only known some of the things my dad had gone through, it might have helped my family so much in understanding what it was like and what it might have been like, and I just would have loved it if we brought this wall, you know, 20 years ago when he was alive, what kind of healing there might have been if my father could have gone and done that part. So we're super proud to be bringing this to Oregon and specifically to Polk County, and if you guys have any questions at all, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Commissioner Kiran?
Probably not a question, just a couple of things I'd like to say. First off, thank you for your service. Sergeant, you too. As somebody who grew up right at the end, I remember I was on the bubble of that war, I just really want to say thank you for what you're doing. And I remember the first time I went to Washington, DC, to the wall, and I was with Bob Puentes. Probably everybody here knows the late George Puentes, founder, right, Rick, founder of Tortillas here, Don Poncho. And his brother was with me, and I remember him finding his cousin on that wall and what it meant to him, and I just stood back for probably 45 minutes while he sat there. It was just a really moving thing, and I think bringing this to here, and I wrote down the dates, I was sitting here on the phone, or on my phone, because I want to go and see it, and I want to just experience it, because there's a connection to all of us, whether we served or we didn't serve, especially people in my age that were just right at the end of that. And I didn't serve, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, is because I didn't serve in the military. I said, I'll serve somewhere else someday, public service. So thank you for your service. And Brent, thank you for what you do, not only for Polk County, but for this whole region and your commissioners over there, for what you do to serve those that have served us and come before. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys are here, and I'm really glad that you're doing this. I had a professor and a mentor in college who was a Green Bayan Vietnam, and just the stories he told of the abuse that him and some of his fellow soldiers got when they came home from folks who didn't understand them or, you know, whatever the story was of what was going on at the time, they treated it as if these folks who got drafted into the Army and served their country somehow were bad guys, and just really shameful. I mean, when he talked about, I remember hearing his experience of coming back home after losing friends, serving our country, and then just a level of kind of just abuse that he and some of his friends suffered afterwards. I really think of that as really a shameful moment in American history, that we treat our veterans that way, and so things like this, I think, sort of help fix that, right?
I think it's going in the right direction.
What's that?
It's going in the right direction.
Yeah, give people an opportunity to show honor to the folks who served our country, to thank them for their service, and that's important for our veterans, but I think it's also important for all the rest of us. I mean, this is an important thing for us to show gratitude to the folks who've served our country. I think that's a healing thing for the country as well. So I'm really grateful that you're doing this, and I lived in DC for a little bit after college, and I used to, I actually was right next to the Arlington Cemetery, and I used to run through the cemetery in the mornings, and I would actually, I would also run to the Vietnam Memorial as well, and it's just really important for me. It was really important for me to start my day that way and to kind of remind myself of, you know, what our fellow countrymen and women have sacrificed for us to live in this free country, and yeah, it was just a very formative experience for me in my early twenties. So yeah, I want to echo, thank you for your service, thank you, Eric Claus, for your service, and thank you for doing this wall. I want, we're going to kind of be shouting from the rooftops, telling everybody to get out there, because I think this is a really important thing.
We appreciate it. Alvin, thank you for helping set this up. Thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. All right, you ready for the consent agenda, Commissioner Kiran?
I am. All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent agenda, first under Board of Commissioners, board appointments, for the Parks Commission. Approve an order to appoint Chester Wayne Rollins to the Marion County Parks Commission with a term date ending June 30th, 2029. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number seven to the contract for procurement, licensing, and maintenance of electronic health records management system with Innex Soft Inc., Soft Tech Inc., to add $3,028,780 for a new contract total not to exceed agreement total of $8,260,000. Amend the statement of work and extend the term to August 31st, 2030, for the electronic health records management system. Under Public Works, approve amendment number one to the construction contract with HP Civil Inc. to add $229,537 for a new contract total of $771,832.55, of which an estimated $183,629.60 will utilize federal funds with an estimated $45,907.40 that will utilize county funding to provide modifications to the steering winch system for the Marion County ferry boat program through June 30th, 2026.
I second the motion. We have a motion a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's see. Kelly, are you coming? Steve, oh, Steve's there. Oh, there you are. Okay, I was looking for you. All right, next up, we have Steve Dickey, and we're going to consider approval of the sub-recipient agreement with Catholic Community Services to provide community development block grant funding in a not-to-exceed amount of $225,000 to assist with expenses for the Seymour Center Commercial Kitchen renovation project.
Good morning, commissioners. Yesterday, we have, actually, we have a total of three agreements that we are bringing to you for signature and approval, and these were all projects that were included in our 2025 Annual Action Plan that was approved on July 9th. The first project here is for Catholic Community Services to receive $225,000 in community development block grant funds for the purchase of commercial kitchen equipment and the renovation of a site to create a facility that will provide meal services to homeless populations as well as vocational training opportunities for people who are coming out of those situations and to help them move forward on the right track. This is a project that is in partnership with the project that was approved the year prior with the Church at the Park, and it is a partnership that I think will leverage both of the grants favorably for our community, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do there any questions, Commissioner Kiran?
No, just, the reason we wanted to do it this way was so that that equipment stayed with the building, that they are the landlord, so.
Yes, yes.
Why we're doing it this way.
It looks like we have some folks in the audience for some of the other contracts. Do you want us to just run through these, or do you want to give an opportunity for folks to kind of?
I just see Josh Graves with Catholic Community Services just arrived also.
All right. Josh, come on down. There's a seat right there. We're talking about your project.
It's right there.
Right there. Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
For the record, I'm Josh Graves, CEO of Catholic Community Services and Catholic Community Services Foundation.
Fabulous. Tell us a little bit about this project.
Yeah, so this project is really centered around helping people develop skills. It is taking a space that was formerly the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank at our campus on Portland Road and turning it into a commercial kitchen with classroom spaces, with skill-building spaces, and with opportunities for particularly residents, young residents from Church at the Park, guests, as Church at the Park refers to them, teaching them skills to work in a commercial kitchen, to cook in a commercial kitchen, which will also result in them being able to provide meals for the other Church at the Park sites. So it's really a great opportunity for skill development, and I think the thing that really I'm most proud of with this is that space went from being a food bank, that was a wonderful food bank where people were able to get food, to a skill center where people are going to be able to gain skills and learn job skills and have employment.
Super cool. Any questions, Commissioner Kiran?
Love commercial kitchens.
I bet you do. All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the sub-recipient agreement with Catholic Community Services, William Valley, to provide community development block grant funding in not-to-exceed amount of $225,000 to assist with expenses for the Seymour Center Commercial Kitchen renovation project, retroactive to July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028.
I second the motion. We have a motion a second. Do you have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate you.
Okay, we got Liberty House up next. Do you guys want to come on down?
Yes, we have Allison Kelly and Peter Carrillo from Liberty House with us this morning, and this project is to provide operational support in the startup phase of the new location for Liberty House in Woodburn, serving the North Marion County area. This is an area that has seen significant growth in population, and there's also a need for the highly valued services that Liberty House provides to our communities. This is for the, in the amount of $113,016, and it is a one-time-only fund to help during the startup phase while they get their client base established. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have a few things to share, if I may.
Wonderful, please.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you again. My name's Allison Kelly. I've been serving as the CEO of Liberty House for 12 years, and with me is Peter Carrillo. He's the Director of our Community Engagement and Prevention and Development Department. I'd just like to say thank you for your leadership, all the strategic investments in Marion County. It just makes a really big difference, and especially these more remote areas in Marion County. Liberty House is the children's advocacy center serving Marion and Polk Counties. Our mission is excellence in the assessment, treatment, and prevention of abuse, neglect, trauma, and grief in order to promote health and hope in children, youth, families, and communities. We are a focused team of trauma specialists, providing specialized pediatric and mental health services for children birth through age 18 referred for concerns of all types, and this is the part where I have to use some words that we don't normally use every day, of physical abuse, sexual abuse, trafficking, and harm. We also serve as the coordinators of the Marion County Multidisciplinary Child Abuse Intervention Team, and both children's advocacy centers and these MDTs are named in state statute. Statute, that's a way of our public policy saying we really need to invest in diagnosing and healing and bringing offenders to justice. And let's be clear, the prevalence of this type of harm is higher than what we would expect, and that abuse, if left unaddressed, can contribute to lifelong suffering, substance abuse, job loss, and homelessness. That said, with the right intervention, healing can occur, and children can go on to live great lives and achieve their dreams, and that's obviously what we want for all children in our area. In 2023, at the request of officials in Woodburn and with the encouragement of leaders in North Marion County and with your encouragement, after three years of due diligence, Liberty House signed a historic six-year lease for medical office space in Woodburn to better serve that rapidly growing community, as well as the rural communities of Donald, Hubbard, Aurora, St. Paul, Mount Angel, Jervis, and Silverton, and all the unincorporated areas out there. Liberty House has seen over 100 patients at the new clinic, and law enforcement chiefs in the area have expressed deep gratitude for our services being closer for those children and families and for their own professionals. Liberty House is committed to supporting its operations in North Marion County area, and to that end, we have started holding weekly multidisciplinary team meetings or case staffings in Woodburn specifically designed to support the important work of our law enforcement and child welfare professionals, and to make it easier to schedule services to meet the needs of children and their families. Liberty House has received a small new a small new grant from the city of Woodburn for each of the next five years, and our revenue consistently has come from a balanced blend of private donations and grants, public grants and billable receipts. This community development block grant from Marion County will play a very helpful role in supporting the continued ramp-up of services throughout this fiscal year. Our fall fundraising event has been moved from South Salem to an attractive, an area that's more attractive to North Marion County residents and business owners, and we are continuing to work with community leaders and will work to develop an annual spring gathering. This year at Liberty House, we've also taken advantage of opportunities to streamline our own overhead administrative expenses in an effort to prioritize our community-facing, outward-facing services. It takes time to build the necessary relationships, and we thank you again. This community development block grant will support our overall efforts to help this project be successful over the long run.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Cameron, any questions?
No, we know this is good work, and we appreciate the expansion outside the Salem-Kaiser area into the North Marion County on lots of services that have been happening, and we can talk more about all this overall grant, but I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the sub-recipient agreement with Liberty House to provide community development block grant funding in the not-to-exceed amount of $113,016 to assist with lease expenses and support staff to expand services for families in North Marion County retroactive to July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, and last but not least, Marion Polk Food Share. You guys want to come on up?
Yes, we have Rick Galpo and Ian Dixon-Malone from Marion Polk Food Share with us today. This project is a request for $300,000 that was approved in the 2025 Annual Action Plan. This $300,000 in CDBG funds will provide assistance in the overall cost of purchasing a larger facility to meet the needs of expanding demands on Marion Polk Food Share services that they deliver to our greater community. This is a project that has other support already in place, and I would be happy to answer any questions or hand it off to the representatives from Marion Polk Food Share.
I don't have any questions.
All right, good.
Okay, go for it.
Rick Galpo, Marion Polk Food Share. First of all, I just wish I was as cool as Josh, that I could just stroll in at the right exact moment and show up, so.
You help me know what I should aspire to.
I think I've just put a bad influence on him.
That's true. Pretty proud of himself.
I just want to say we're super excited for Marion County's support. This project has been getting a lot of combination of both government support on all levels, city, county, state, and federal. Federal's a little bit knock, knock on wood still, but we think that's happening, but also public, private support. More than $6 million already committed and more coming. And just to remind you, one of the most exciting things about this project is our dual work of food boxes, which go out to all communities in both Marion and Polk Counties, but also our Meals on Wheels program. This project will put that under one roof, and it will be a great place for volunteers to serve the community. So we thank you for your support.
Fabulous. Thank you. Commissioner Cameron, any questions?
No, in fact, I mentioned George Quintus. That's the building where Don Poncho was, right? I mean, that's public, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
I didn't say anything bad.
No, no. In fact, when you come into our building, his wife's name is, our building is in honor of her.
It's just really interesting that you're in their original building there, and now you're moving to the, their next facility.
We're little hermit crabs. We just follow them.
Have they moved yet?
All but. They'll be out of the building by October.
Where are they going to be?
They're in a, next to Lineage in South Salem, part of an old Norpack building and an expansion.
That's right.
It's a 300,000-square-foot building.
Good. They're still in the community.
They're still in the community.
All right, this is exciting.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the sub-recipient agreement with the Marion Polk Food Share to provide community development block grant funding in the not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 to assist with the purchase of a new facility for a food bank expansion retroactive to July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
I'm going to second the motion. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Chair, just to recap, we just, I think we just granted $638,000, about $638,000, and we just, you know, this is new, I want to say this is new money. We didn't have this money 10 years ago.
Correct.
That, that we're able to help with giving it out to our communities and places where it really makes a difference. So, Steve, appreciate your work. I see Kelly back there. Kelly, thank you for your team and what you guys do to help get these applications in and set it up for success. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. We're happy to do it.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, is Ryan here? Ah, there you are. We are going to consider approval amendment number 15, which reinstates an incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority. Tell us all about it, Ryan.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services, and I am here seeking approval of a, of an amendment that would extend our previous agreement with Oregon Health Authority for six months. The, the original agreement ended on June 30th, 2025, in anticipation of a new biennium contract being awarded. Through negotiations, counties and Oregon Health Authority were unable to come to agreement on, on contract language for a new format of a, of a county financial assistance award, and one of the remedies to make sure that services were not disrupted was to extend the previous agreement for six months. This would get us through December 31st, 2025. The funding amount of 6.8 million reflects six months' worth of funding. This is what was the level of funding that was anticipated and budgeted for us, and this, this agreement funds our non-Medicaid services as our role as the community mental health program. So, this helps to fund outpatient services for mental health, outpatient services for addiction treatment, our behavioral health crisis services, including our 24/7 crisis response teams, services to older adults, PSRB, supportive deployment, and other sort of foundational work that we, that we do as the community mental health program. This agreement would get us to the, the date of January 1st, 2026, when we're anticipating that we'll have a contract in place for the remaining 18 months, or at least we're hoping that we'll have a contract in place for the remaining 18 months to continue the services and to continue our role in this capacity. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Cameron?
No.
I just want to say, good job. Keep fighting the good fight. This is, there's been a big negotiation with the state of Oregon because they have been really trying to change the terms of a longstanding community mental health agreement in a way that I believe is detrimental to our community, and so I just appreciate the work that you and our legal team have been doing of, of making it clear what the problems are with what they've proposed and staying at the negotiating table. And so, I'm glad we're not signing something that's going to hurt our community, even if that means that we have to extend the contract and keep negotiating. So, thanks for your work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, and I do think it's important to note that, you know, we're really, what we're advocating for in this agreement is to, to maintain the services that we've had in our community for decades at this point. We want to be able to prioritize all the needs of our community, not just a small subset, and we want to maintain all the array of services that we currently provide. And so, it's really important for us that the language ultimately allow us the freedom to meet our local community where they're at and to meet with our community needs and to be able to address those in a meaningful way and, and not have those priorities sort of dictated to us at the local level. So, I think that it's really important that language gives us the ability to, to advocate for the needs of our community, because that's first and foremost who we're here to serve, so.
Very well said.
Yep, perfect.
Commissioner Cameron?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve amendment number 15, which reinstates an incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority, adds $6,807,888.60 for a new IGA total of $31,454,558.99, and extends the term date to December 31st, 2025, for the financing of community mental health services, addiction treatment, recovery, and prevention programs, problem gambling services.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Brian, you're up. We're going to consider an amendment to the standard professional services contract with Keller Associates Incorporated for the Canyon Sewer Project. Tell us all about it.
Good morning. Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director. I apologize for not having a slideshow today. I think Ryan will take you to a slideshow on his, on his item. On our Capitol Projects, we try to, for, for public information.
We know all about this one.
Yep. So, I think a lot of folks know about this, especially those driving Highway 22, look over the river at the east end of Mill City. You will see a lot of activity going on. We are constructing a wastewater treatment plant using ARPA dollars on behalf of the city of Mill City, and that plant will have the capacity to serve both Mill City and the city of Gates. We have broken ground on construction, so this has been a fast-paced project from the get-go. Let's see, I forget when we broke ground. Was that three weeks ago, four weeks ago? We have the groundbreaking ceremony.
At least.
And when you look out at the construction site, you will see structural concrete coming up out of the ground. The first concrete pour has already happened, and Slayden Constructors is our CMGC contractor, and they're absolutely attacking this project. All right, the, the contract action that's before you today is an amendment to our professional services agreement with Keller Associates. They are the engineer of record, and they've designed and permitted the, the facility on our behalf. This amendment is to add on construction-phase services. So, they're providing a, a project manager. Usually, we, we do a lot of this contract oversight ourselves in-house, but with all the projects we have going, it just, the demand sort of eclipses our in-house capacity. So, that's why we are contracting out a large share of this contract, the construction-phase oversight services. So, they're providing a project manager, inspection team for specialty inspection and regular inspections, managing RFI, is just making sure that we get this thing. We hold up our end of the bargain to get the construction done on time. So, this is, that's kind of in a nutshell what's included in the amendment, and this should get us all the way through commissioning of the, of the treatment plant and transitioning over to operation by the city of Mill City.
Fabulous.
Happy to answer any questions you have.
It's just interesting, Brian, a person that I know lives in Salem, and I was talking to him the other day, and they said, hey, what's going on up the canyon? I said, what do you mean? He said, well, when I drove down the canyon, I saw all this construction over there. I said, was it over in Mill City on the other side of the river? And they go, yeah. So, they're seeing, you see it. People are seeing the orange stuff and going, what's going on up there? So, it's, it's well underway. So, yeah, good stuff.
Okay.
All right, ready for motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve amendment number nine to the standard professional services contract with Keller Associates, Inc. to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $3,955,145 for a new not-to-exceed contract total of $14,103,357 for additional construction-phase services and adjustment to the scope of services for the North Santiam Canyon Sewer Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thanks, Brian.
Next up, we're going to consider approval of the construction contract with North Santiam Paving Company in the amount of $664,310 to provide construction services for the North Fork Road slide repair at Milepost 3 Project. Ah, Ryan's got the slideshow.
I do have a slideshow. So, for the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works, and as you said, we're here to talk about a landslide on North Fork Road. To be clear, this is a small landslide. It's not the large landslide that has the gravel section. I like to clarify that early in all of these presentations. So, you can see here where it's located. It's across the river from Taylor Park Road, about three miles up North Fork Road. So, these are photos of the slide just after it happened and after our operations crew was able to clear the slide. So, when it happened, we got that road cleared. We did some temporary measures to stabilize it, but we haven't had an opportunity to go in and do a larger repair. All right, so what we're looking at doing is a stone buttress. We will take the roadway to one lane. We will set up temporary signals so that it is signalized 24 hours a day, and that will reduce the need for flaggers. And you can see the, in the schematics, just, it's a lot of rock that will stabilize that slope. So, the low bid was received from North Santiam Paving at $664,310, and assuming this contract is approved, they would complete the project in October. And with that, do you have any questions?
We put this on here so that they could get this thing done.
Right.
Yes. We, we want to get it done before the rains get here.
Well, they can start as soon as we sign this, right?
So, should we wait a little bit, or? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'll take a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the construction contract with North Santiam Paving Company in the amount of $664,310 to provide construction services for the North Fork Road slide repair at Milestone, Milestone, Milepost 3.0 Project through October 15th, 2026.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I guess in the old days, they, they would paint miles on stones.
I wasn't going to make any comment about your age, Commissioner Cameron.
There's still some roads that have that.
Okay. I am gonna open a, unless you need a break before we jump into our public hearing? Okay. I'm gonna open a public hearing to consider comprehensive plan amendment, zone change partition, CPZCP, case number 19-005, Lois, is it Fanning? Fanning, trustee of the Henry O. and Lois M. Fanning Trust. The board has had the opportunity to review the documents contained in the record and has had no ex parte communications regarding this matter unless specifically disclosed. If there are any objections to notice jurisdiction or conflicts of interest, parties can raise them during testimony. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria for the application. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence may preclude an appeal on that issue. And Austin is here to kick us off. Welcome, Austin.
Thank you. Good morning. Before I go into my staff report, I do have an additional submission that came in yesterday just before 5:00 p.m. that I'd like to hand out. It is from a neighbor there in opposition of the application, but I've got a couple copies for you all.
Okay.
Mr. Lean, would you like a copy of this submission?
So, the item before you today is an application to change the comprehensive plan designation from SA, which is Special Agriculture, to AR-10, acreage residential with a 10-acre lot-size minimum. With an exception, the statewide land use goal, three agricultural lands on a 20.46-acre parcel, and then a partition to divide that 20.46-acre parcel into two parcels containing 10 acres and 10.46 acres each on a property located in the 2400 block of 62nd Avenue Southeast Salem. The relevant criteria for this application are, from the Marion County Code, Chapter 17.123 Zone Change Procedures, 17.128 acreage residential zone, 17.172 subdivision and partition requirements. Additionally, from the Marion County Comprehensive Plan, the rural residential policies and the rural service policies. From statewide planning goals, particularly goal number three, agricultural lands, and from Oregon Administrative Rules Division 660, or Rule 660 Division 4, the goal exception process. The parcel is currently undeveloped, but it's being farmed and is specially assessed for agriculture by the Marion County Tax Assessor's Office. Soils on the parcel are consist, are composed of Amity, Woodburn, Concord, and Silverton. Concord, and Silverton Class II and III silt loams that are defined as high value for agriculture. Surrounding properties to the west and south are zoned special agriculture and are composed of small to medium-sized lots in agricultural and rural residential use. Property to the north and east are zoned AR for acreage residential and are developed with small rural residential lots. There are no streams, wildlife habitat areas, geological hazards, or flood zones identified on the property, and the proposal should not affect air quality or natural resources in the area. The original proposal included an exception to Goal 14, which is urbanization, to allow for two-acre lots. After being remanded by Luba, the applicant has modified the proposal to remove the Goal 14 exception and create two lots at or above 10 acres, such that Goal 14 does not apply. The applicant submitted additional findings addressing the revised application. These findings included testimony from Larry Fennig, who has farmed the property and Marion, other properties in Marion County for 50 years, and Wallace Lean, the applicant representative, who worked on farms growing up and who has worked in and around the Oregon land use system his whole life. The additional findings lay out in greater detail the relationship between the subject property, adjacent lands, and other relevant factors, as requested by Luba on their remand. They specifically wanted a smaller study area that focused only on the adjacent parcels and more detail about how those adjacent lands commit this to a non-farm use. The applicant has submitted and analyzed a study area that looks at adjacent lands rather than the broader area and has arrived at the same conclusion that the application should be approved. Additionally, conflicts with farming that are presented by the residential parcels located directly east of the subject property and how they irrevocably commit that parcel to non-resource use are explained in greater detail. The remand from Luba was complicated and forced the applicants to essentially submit an entirely new application and analysis. The hearings officer then needed to scrutinize this additional information under a narrow scope provided by Luba. The applicants recognized the extra time and scrutiny that she put into this review, seeing that she needed to cite applicable case law and factual reasons for her recommendation. The hearings officer has recommended approval, and planning agrees with her recommendation. The proposal satisfies all relevant criteria. Planning on behalf of Marion County Land Development Engineering and Permits requests that two conditions be removed that no longer apply due to the larger lot sizes. Those are conditions F and M in the hearings officer recommendation. Those conditions have to do with drainage and detention. So condition F is, prior to plat approval, provide a stormwater detention template plan by a licensed civil engineer. This is no longer required due to the larger lot size. And then condition M is, individual lot stormwater detention systems shall be supplied for each lot. That is no longer being required by LDP, so conditions F and M can be struck from the record. The options today are to, or staff recommends that the application be approved. Other options for consideration are, continue the public hearing, close the public hearing and leave the record open to deliberate at a later date, close the public hearing and approve, modify, or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. And with that, I will stand for any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Austin. That was relatively complicated. Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
No, I don't. I'm actually, I followed it.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Oh, pretty straightforward. I think the, so we got, we have some other people are going to come up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Austin.
Not at this time, Austin.
Okay, Wallace, you're up next.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Wallace Lean. I'm a lawyer specializing in land use and real estate. And I've been helping the Fennig family for six years, I guess, seven years on this thing. Couple of cases before the hearings officer, up to Luba. And it is a complicated case. Factually, it's not so complicated, but you've got the exception process, you've got the zone change, the comprehensive plan change, and then the partitioning thrown in on top of that. So we've been patient, trying to get through this thing. And when we got the pretty narrow remand from Luba, there were two things that they were concerned with. The first one was the Goal Exception. When we went from the SA EFU, kind of a zone, to AR with a two-acre limit, they were concerned that we hadn't met the criteria for the Goal 14 exception. And so we took a look at that, and the Fennig family decided, rather than fighting that battle, that they could really live with just two parcels. So instead of the two-acre parcels that were originally proposed, we modified the application to go 10, 10-acre parcels. And when we did 10-acre parcel, under the law, a 10-acre parcel is not considered to be an urban parcel. It's a rural parcel, which then eliminated the Goal 14 altogether. So it was a, it was a give-up on the part of the Fennig family, but it was a gain in trying to get this application fit within the land use laws. The other problem that Luba identified was study area. And those are always difficult in these cases, you know? You pick a study area, and everybody nitpicks, you didn't get this parcel, and you put that parcel in. It shouldn't have been. And my theory always is, because you're looking at, in a zone change comp plan amendment, you're looking at a community. My process has always been include a lot of parcels. So what we did was, we took four or five, I think four assessor maps that centered around the parcel, and we analyzed every one of them. And Luba was a little bit overwhelmed by that, and they said, well, that's too much. We need to have a little bit more focused study. And they pointed out that the rules and the prior case law say that when you're looking at the Goal Three exception, your focus is on adjacent properties. So we did a second study. We left the first study in place so everybody could see the surrounding area parcel. But then we did a very focused study on the parcels that were adjacent. Adjacent meaning, at some point in time, their boundaries were combined. They touched, if you will. And when we did that, we found that there were only 13 parcels instead of like 300 that we had before. Eleven of those 13 had houses on them. The average acreage of those parcels was 2.3 acres. And only one of those 13 parcels was in farm use deferral. And so we took a look at this, and the hearings officer especially, she had a great comment. She said, well, this is going to be like two or three times bigger than any other parcel in the neighborhood, so it's going to provide the same kind of buffer that the 20-acre parcel had before. And I thought, I should have thought of that when I did the presentation. But I thought that was a good analysis. And so when you look at this irrevocably committed exception, one of the key elements is, is there something that this change is going to do on the subject property that might force one of these adjacent parcels to get more intensively used? That's sort of the focus of this thing. And so you look at the 11 parcels with houses on them that are already 2.3 acres. They're not affected. There's no way they can do anything different. And most of the parcels along, what is it, 62nd are an acre. I mean, I think seven of those are only an acre in size and butt right up to the next property line of the Fennig property. So that leaves the two parcels on one side. One is 4.17 acres. So it would have the potential to be divided. So that property owner could say, well, I want to do this, too. I want to change, because then I could get an AR two and get one, get another house and have two parcels. The other parcel is only 3.17 acres in size. It doesn't even have that potential. So the 13 parcels, you only have one parcel that's not in farm use. It's got a house and a big shop and an outbuilding on it. It's not configured in such a way to be able to be divided. So there just really is no potential for the land division on the Fennig property to have any impact on any of the adjacent properties. So we made that pitch to the hearings officer, and she took a long time, because it's a complicated case. And she came back and agreed that we've now met all the criteria in the county code, as well as the concerns expressed by Luba, and wrote a very nice and detailed opinion. Right on the money, we agree with it, with the changes that staff has made to the conditions of approval. We're in full support of that, including the 100-foot setback that was a little bit controversial during the original hearing process. Because of the size of the parcel, 100-foot setbacks don't really, or 300-foot setback that's normal don't really work, because this property's only 500 feet wide. If you get 300 feet on each side, you're basically taking away your building envelope. So with that, we believe we have enough facts, and we agree with the hearings officer, and we would urge, for the second time, for you to approve this application. Now, to answer any questions, I would like to introduce Larry Fennig, who is the primary farmer in the family. His parents are the ones who own the property, and he would be available to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, we urge your approval, and thank you very much for taking another look at this thing for us.
Commissioner Cameron, do you have any questions?
Just, one question I had about, oh, we just got, I think this was just kind of from a neighbor. I don't even know where this neighbor, they didn't, I don't think they put their, oh, there they are. 5975 Culver Drive Southeast. Are they, are they one of the abutting properties? Do we know?
They're not abutting. They are one property away. So I believe the property Mr. Lean is talking about, that is three acres and configured with an outbuilding, that separates this parcel from the subject property.
Okay, so they're not abutting. Okay.
This is the record.
Okay, and these are the, this is the property we're talking about. Yeah. Thank you.
Wallace, tell me about the setback thing, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that. Do you guys, are you okay with?
Standard setback is 300 feet.
Yep.
And the property is about 500 feet wide.
Okay.
And so if you had a 300-foot setback on each side, you don't have any area in the middle to build a house. And then if you consider that the setback probably only is applied to those properties in farm use, then that takes away one of the 300-foot setbacks, but still limits the building envelope on the properties that are available.
Okay.
And this has the additional problem that, as you probably saw in the aerial photographs, there's a EPA power line, 100-foot right-of-way that goes sort of angular through the middle of the property. And then it has, it's sort of overgrown, and you can't build anything underneath that. So eliminate, primarily because there isn't any farm use. There's no need for a 300-foot setback in the first place.
Okay.
And the fact that the building envelopes are tricky on this property, staff agreed that we should go with a 100-foot setback instead of a special setback.
Okay.
So that might be a question. What are the setbacks on those other properties that are, have houses on them? Of the 11 houses, are they 100-foot?
Those are not. So those were developed before land use went into effect. And so those properties have your standard 20-foot or 5-foot setbacks on the sides. Yeah.
Okay. The 100-foot is, the 100-foot's bigger than what most of those houses have. Okay.
Some of those houses along 62nd are right, butt right up against the property, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fennig, do you want to come chat with us? I have you signed up next.
I'm Larry Fennig. I'm just representing my folks in the trust. So I can follow through with.
You pull up the microphone.
With my father and mother's initial plans for this property. And my father died when we first started it back in '06, '07, and my mother's still alive, though. And she's trying to follow through, so we've been working with this for quite a long time.
Yes, you have.
I was kind of impressed with the hearings officer. She did take a lot of time. But from my understanding, she even came out and looked at the property and everything around it and agreed that this is not farm area anymore, like it was 50 years ago. So agreed to approve this and was hoping that we could move forward with this. I'm here pretty much just to answer any questions you have, maybe on the farming end or anything else on this property history or whatever that is here.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah. No, I just thank you for being here and being a member of our community that wants to do some things with your family. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry this process is taking so long. When I, when I looked at how long this process has been for you, I was like, that's, I mean, yes, it's relatively legally complicated, but it's not that legally complicated. You deserved a faster process than you got. So, okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Cameron, are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I am. Mr. Chair, if you're ready for it.
I'm ready.
I'm going to move that we, that we, well, we'll close the public hearing and that we consider that we approve the comprehensive plan amendment, zone change, partition, CPZCP case number 119-005, Louis Fennig Trust of Henry and Lois Fennig Trust.
Is that okay?
Did you want to adopt the conditions of the hearings officer minus?
Minus what?
Conditions happen now.
Okay, I'll amend that motion to say what I said before, but also with the conditions that planning is recommending, that the hearing officer is recommending minus F and M.
Perfect.
Conditions.
I will second that motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
No, thank you, legal counsel.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So that hearing is closed. I'm going to reopen our board session. Is there anything else that is in the order before we adjourn, Commissioner Cameron?
Not from me, I don't think.
Okay. Coming up to the end of summer, unfortunately. Hopefully, my kids can go back to school in a couple of weeks.
Wait, now you're gonna, you're gonna take a little time off for your kids.
Yeah, I am. Yeah.
Good for you.
We're gonna have an end of the summer escape, and then back to the grind, so.
I just, those are just such good memories, you know? I shared some pretty emotional things this morning with the Vietnam Memorial. But I just remember, you know, like when I was 11 years old, going to the Tetons and going camping, and it raining, and our tent flooding out. I mean, it's like memories.
Best thing ever.
The best thing ever. Going up to, what is it, Jinx, or Lake Jinx or something in Grand Tetons, and then going Yellowstone, fishing on my, fishing with my dad and my uncle, who was only a couple of years older than me, my uncle. And just having a great time fishing, and all of a sudden, the floods, the sky just blows up. And we're just out in the middle of Lake Yellowstone. Having those family memories, I don't know what you're going to do with your kids, but it's so important. Yeah.
Yesterday, my three-year-old asked me if I would play Legos with him. And so I went downstairs, and you know, you got like, it's like any Lego thing. At one point, it was a set, and now it's just a box of Legos. And so I made him a car and a rocket ship slash airplane, and they were hideous. And he thought they were the coolest things ever. He was just, he wanted to go to sleep with his rocket ship.
Oh, my God.
This morning, all he want, he was like, can you go play Legos? And I was like, ah, I gotta go to work. But yeah, that's pretty special.
That's fantastic.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, when you think they're hideous, the kid just looks at it and goes, this is beautiful.
This is the best thing ever.
They see things you can't see. Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
With that, we are adjourned.
Nice job.